Good morning, everybody. Welcome to staff meeting. It's on a Thursday. Thanks for being flexible. Since Tuesday wasn't an option, so we appreciate it. A lot of really good things to discuss today. Tom, take it away.
We have actually four things today, three, three that were set by agenda and then Tanya will need a little bit of time to talk about legislative updates at the end. So the three topics for day, we'll go a little bit out of order. We'll have Brian Nicholas is here from EMS today. Rusty and I had met with EMS Command a couple of weeks ago and he want to give us a fleet status update and I think we need an out of budget consideration on an ambulance purchase. So I think that's what Brian's going to talk about today. Then the second item is a property tax waiver policy that we've had at the county for eight or 10 years and we'll describe that more when we get to that item and Tom Henry will be the main presenter on that. And then Lindsay into prep us for the budget retreat tomorrow. We'll give her historical, where have we been for the last 10 or 15 years regarding taxes and meal levy and all kinds of financial information to to prepare you for the budget retreat tomorrow. So Brian, you will start us up with an ambulance fleet update.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I appreciate your time today. Brian Nicholas, EMS Deputy Chief. I'm here today to make a request to add one ambulance to our fleet. The reason I'm here today as opposed to the normal budget process is we're trying to meet a deadline. Basically, if we can create a purchase order by March 1st, we have the opportunity to shave about one year off of the normal two-year process to get an ambulance during a, by using a program that our vendor has where they use it as a demo. They create an ambulance. The exact same specifications as all our others, but they use it for a couple of months and trade shows to show it off to, which is really good advertising for us. But the big thing, the big advantage for us is, is that if we can use this format, we can hopefully get it by the end of the year. As opposed to the normal two-year process. So the request is to use our EMS Equipment Reserve Fund to purchase this. We want to add resources to just keep up with the the demand. And also support our remount program, which has been very successful, saves about $117,000 per ambulance as opposed to simply buying new. This is a one page out of a larger operations report that we're just putting the final touches on that you'll get, but you can see, I call your attention to response time party one and two, you can see last year the times did slightly increase and so there's definitely a need to continue meeting the demand. This next slide is is pretty evident. This is since 1975. As you can see, our demand has continued to increase, probably not surprisingly, but we had a tremendous increase yes, last year of about 5% or 3,500 calls. And so we just need to, this is just what we consider normal growth of the department that needs to occur to continually meeting the demand. Our goal is to add two more 12-hour on-duty trucks this year and two more next year. Our staffing has continued to steadily improve and you know, we greatly appreciate the support that the that all of you have given us. This is a a demand graph that we use frequently. I would call your attention to the green line is is the units that we were able to staff in 2024. The top blue line is our max call volume. So as you can see, our max call volume is exceeding our staff unit demand. And so obviously we need to close that gap and that's, that's the request today supports that. And so you have these handouts as well. And again, along the same lines, basically how we measure our workload, one measure that we commonly use is UHU unit hour utilization. Right now it's about 0.55. Our goal is about, we'd love to have it 0.35, but we'd be ecstatic if we get it down to 0.4. So obviously adding more trucks to the streets reduces burnout, helps morale and helps serve our, help serve our citizens to provide what they need. A fully equipped ambulance with chassis and all the equipment, we're estimating at 561. And so you have these handouts and so again, we, I can't emphasize enough how much we appreciate the support you've given us over the last few years and happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, chief, thanks so much for the presentation. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Howe.
Ryan, thank you for the presentation and I'm just curious, but how often are we hitting status three, two, one and zero?
I don't have those exact numbers. I can tell you that it, obviously that graph I showed earlier, it's not an uncommon occurrence. And I don't have those numbers with me. We've ran into some challenges with the new CAD system that we can't produce those numbers quite as easily as we used to. But I'm happy to get you some estimates, so.
Is it safe to say it's daily?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, you're right.
I think, I think realities, I, I support this passionately, but I actually think you're being too too low in your request. I've been, I've been saying for years, I think our number of crews on the street needs to be increased several, by several. And that's because call volumes gone up. The reality is that you, we used to have more, we're still down, I think below our our historic levels. We, we've gone down and we've stayed down. We've never have recovered really. Even back when Scott Hadley was here, we talked about increasing crews way back then and we weren't quite where we needed to be at that time. So I think we're substantially lower than we were at that point. So I'll just say, I think that we ought to have a plan to do this. And you talk about providing public safety being a number one priority. We have to do it well. And I think that when we're not, when we're hitting status zero on daily basis, that's, that's a concern. So I see you want to say something. I'll stop talking.
I would just say I appreciate that feedback and, and you know, we are requesting an additional one through the normal budget process. And I know most of you have seen that projected growth map through 2035, so I don't anticipate this trend of increased volume is going to change. So we're just trying to keep up.
So this is just about one ambulance today, but we have, do we have a plan for addressing the the, you know, systematic response of the entire organization? Are we going to change that substantially?
Yes, sir. And I, and to forecast the future, I would anticipate we're going to need to expand the fleet by at least one ambulance every other year, if not every year. So just, just to keep pace with the demand, if the demand obviously continues to rise and.
A couple of questions real quick. This is coming from the Equipment Reserve Fund. What does that look like? What's the balance there? And how much does an ambulance cost us today?
Well, I'll defer to Brian to speak to the ambulance costs. Because, yeah, I think, so the ambulance itself is the 366,000 up at the top, but then you have all of the equipment that is necessary to outfit that ambulance appropriately. And so that brings you to that 500, well, it would be 534,000 last year. You'll see why there's that inflationary increase to actually anticipate what it would be this year. So if you all recall, we consolidated the EMS fund into the general fund a few years ago. And when that happened, we still had to earmark the dollars that were in the EMS fund only for use on EMS. So the commission authorized us to transfer those dollars from the EMS fund to the EMS Equipment Reserve. So we have one large Equipment Reserve Fund that balance is significant, but for EMS specifically, they have 2.76 million there now. And I know that there is an equipment replacement program that has been initiated. And so that also is intended to try to help offset costs for ventilator replacement. The tough books and things that they use, all of those in the future. So that's why for now, I think we're focusing on the one ambulance is because we're also trying to anticipate those other upcoming needs for use with that.
So we, but we have dollars allocated for this purpose and you have no concerns with.
It's, we have dollars allocated for EMS Equipment Reserve. You all will still need to take mission action to authorize the use of the funds for this. There will actually be a vote for it.
Yes.
But there are dollars there, yes.
Okay. And, and you said one this year, there will be another one coming in budget request for 2026, correct?
Correct.
Are you also, not to tip the cap of what's coming in the budget hearings and your request from EMS, are we also going to scale staff too? Is that, we have that discussion or is there an anticipation of wanting more FTEs?
I know we have three requests in our business needs assessment related to personnel. So I mean, happy to get you details.
No, I think we'll get details here next month or so. So I'm just curious kind of where the trajectory is.
We'll, we'll need to have a deeper dive on this. This is, it's a fascinating discussion, what's going on and the demand of what EMS is being asked to do. And it has to do with primary care physician access and insurance and on and on. We need a deeper dive into this because if you look at how their numbers escalating, it's not, it's not simpatico with the population increase. There's more going on here behind the scenes. So I will get.
Oh, I, I totally agree, Tom. Do we, last question. These, this next truck, do you have a geographic area where you think this truck needs to go? Have you guys gotten that deep into this yet or?
Well, as you can see from this previous graph, maybe not geographically, from a time standpoint, you know, obviously it looks like earlier in the day, like maybe six to six will be a good timeframe. As far as where we can house it, we haven't really decided yet. I mean, I know there's been discussions with Derby to try to get an opportunity to place a truck down there and I don't want to get ahead of the process, but.
Are you trying to butter up Commissioner?
Well, we'll find a place for it, certainly. Well.
I'm aware there's a problem down there. I'm going to tell you, it's going to be part of the discussion. See if I'm kidding.
Well, and I, and I would just, I would just add through the CIP process, you all have approved our construction of post one, which are very appreciative and that's, that's getting started. So.
Good. Well, appreciate this. I, I do agree with Commissioner Howe. Obviously, I think there's some things that have to be done here to help scale appropriately. So we'll get together in the budget process and when is this coming before us?
It's to come next Wednesday.
Okay, there we are.
Off agenda or get agenda item.
Okay.
Right now and tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Because this has to be voted on next Wednesday in order for them to try to move this to a point that they can work with the vendor by, I believe. March 1st is the deadline. I don't know how much, there's some flexibility in that, but this has to move quickly.
Okay. So if we have any other questions, we can.
We don't have another commission meeting until March 1st. So.
So the next commission meeting.
It has to be Wednesday.
Those must have a special meeting.
Special meeting or Wednesday. Is there a meeting, there's a meeting that coincides.
There is not a meeting next Wednesday. It's the last Wednesday of the month. That's what I'm saying.
We have to be in a March 1st deadline. No, true.
We need to convene a special meeting to take a vote.
Budget retreat tomorrow, so we're not doing.
We, we will, oh, we will, this, we will use this as a tech, I don't see, there's Lauren. Lauren, we're going to use this as a technical adjustment based on this discussion and then we'll retroactively fix it. So we make a commitment. So we will bring it to you Wednesday, the 5th, but we will take administrative action to allow you to do it based on this conversation.
Oh, good, good to know.
Just to be clear, just the ambulance, no other other fleet of this purchase.
Correct.
Good to know. If we have other questions, we can get you Rusty here. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Now we're ready for Tom Henry to get up and let me set the table for him just a little bit. We've several years ago and Commissioner Hockenway in here too, because he has the history on this. We, when we had the Oakland tornado that moved through, there was a number of structures that were severely damaged and that and the state created law to allow some waiver of taxation, property taxation on properties that were not in use. Over time that has, and it was, and a lot of others weigh in and Justin too. It was designed for residential property owners who lost the use of their homes for large swaths of time after a catastrophe like a tornado. That has changed and morphed over time to where now occasionally the commission will see and hear one of these on a house fire, for example. And it is now stretched into commercial properties to where you'll hear occasional requests from commercial owners who have had either a storm damage or a fire to waive their, their taxes for the period of time when it was not in use. So Tom is here today to kind of talk us through that policy. I know that some commissioners wanted that looked at again, that we, we don't, we don't think we're meeting the spirit of the original state law from 10 years ago. So we're just going to talk through this today. And if there's any decision, policy decision has to maybe to be made, we can set that for a future agenda. So Tom, take us away on that.
Thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. Thomas Henry, Assistant County Counselor. So as Tom kind of alluded to, we're discussing policy, what's current policy 2.304 and looking for input from all of you as to how we would like to move forward with. It's KSA 79-1613 that gives you the authority to enter into this. So do I have? I do. So KSA 79-1613, it allows the county commissioners in the state to provide either property tax abatement or a credit towards, if you've already paid your property taxes for, towards future years of property tax taxes owed. Now, this is something that is allowed. It is permissible, but you are not required to do anything. But for them to qualify for the relief, there has to be an earthquake, flood, tornado, fire, storm, or any event declared a disaster by the state of Kansas that results in their building being destroyed or substantially destroyed. And that's defined as essentially the cost to cure the building back to its original state has to exceed the market value of that building prior to the incident by 50, it has to be, cost at least 50% of the market value of that building going into whatever the natural, the fire, or whatever it is. So just kind of a history on our policy and the statute. So the initial statute and Commissioner Howe can speak to this because he was part of adopting it. The intent of it was for it to be applied to natural disasters only. And was only allowed for homesteads. Homesteads was defined to include like multi-dwelling homes, multipurpose homes and mobile homes and manufactured homes are included as part of that, as long as it's a residence, it's being lived in and used as a residence. Now in 2020, the policy 2.304 as it's situated today was adopted. There's nothing specific to natural disasters and was for homesteads only, which was consistent with the statute at that time. And as Tom kind of mentioned in the intro, the statute changed in 2022. And in it now, it allows for any building that is harmed by fire, flood, whatever the case may be. Can receive property tax relief. There was some question when that came out. Because I think the intent of that was for that to be for like outbuildings and things like that on a property that was used as a residence. But in an opinion from the Property Valuation Division of Kador, they have indicated that as it's drafted, that can apply to any commercial structures, industrial, whatever the case may be. We had a case that we ran into some timing issues last year because of when the property taxes are levied versus when the fire occurred. I just wanted to touch on this and address this. I think whatever we decide to do with the policy, as long as we're still looking to approve some of these abatements and or credits. There, I, there's a way that we can do a workaround that essentially makes the resolution effective after the property taxes are levied, so that we're not having to wait after the application occurs until November, like we had to last year with the property that we were talking about. So but for properties destroyed between January 1st and August 15th, we have the ability to either abate or provide a credit for those taxes. The abatement would occur for unpaid taxes, to the extent any, a portion of the taxes or all of the taxes are paid, that's where the credit would come in and we can do a mixture of both. If the first half taxes are paid in the second half or not, something to that effect. If the, if the destruction occurs after August 15th in any given year, the statute only allows you to give a credit towards future years. So you would have to have them pay the tax and then depending on how you want to do it, we'll talk about some of the options here on the next slide. That can apply to property taxes that would be owed on future years. And the deadline that the taxpayer has to file their application with the county to get the relief is on the 20th of December in the year following the incident. So if they had a fire in 2025, they would have until December 20th, 2026 to file their application. So some of the options that you all have the power to decide based on the authority given by the statute. As I said, this is not a requirement that we approve any of these. So one of the policy options could very well be to not approve any of the applications. You also have the authority to go with what the initial statute was intended to do. You could approve these only in the situation of natural disasters now. Whether we tie that to a natural disaster declared by Kansas or federal or other. We can work with that, but and how we want to define that. I do want to bring up that there's an exception in the current policy that I think probably needs to stick. Because this isn't a required thing that you have to do. There are maybe some scenarios where, you know, if a smaller township is completely wiped out by a tornado and you approve all of these applications and they no longer have a tax base, that could be an issue. So there's an exception built in that essentially says, you know, that there may be certain situations where you could do it maybe just specific to county taxes or just not allow any relief under the policy at all. And then finally, because of the statute change, one of the biggest decisions is, I mean, currently we only allow it for homesteads. The statute's been expanded to allow it for other types of buildings as well. So we kind of need some input from you to say, hey, do we want to allow it for commercial or do we just want to do homesteads or, as we've discussed, nothing at all? And then also kind of speaking to the application we had last year, there was a decision to prorate the relief based on, I guess, the amount of time that homeowner had use of that property during the year. So you also have the ability to do some proration similar to what was done with that particular item and just make that a policy for the use moving forward as well. So with that, I'll kind of leave it up to you for questions and input on.
Yeah, I appreciate it. The, I think I've been here two years. I think I've only had one of these, I believe. So I understand the spirit of this bill, but it's not a very common occurrence. I, my only question, Commissioner Meister has a question. Does property tax, or I'm sorry, property insurance cover this cost for property owner? I mean, are they getting? I don't know.
I, I don't know. I don't know what the insurance policy would include property taxes. I doubt it. I think it's more to rebuild the building that's. But there may be some cost to them for lost use.
Okay, I know, obviously defer to Commissioner Howe. We, we've both been through this a few times here. And you're right, we only get about one or two of these a year at most, but.
And I, I want to speak to that real quick. I think before it used to be on consent, so it wasn't something that was discussed in meetings and then at Commissioner Howe's request, these have been put on new business, I think twice since you've been here, but it's been on consent. A bit more than that prior to that.
Well, my personal thought and then I will defer again in respect to Commissioner Howe, but I, I think including natural disaster language is is the intent and I would support adding natural disasters only. And, and I would also respectful for the other taxing jurisdictions, especially what you just mentioned with with townships, whatever, that, that we only waive our county tax and the cities and school districts, maybe the applicant can go and plead plead at those jurisdictions. So I, I'm in favor of natural disasters, county taxes only. All buildings, I think, and natural disasters should be included.
Yeah.
Not just homes on a, on a tornado.
And to the extent that the, the abatement's going to apply to other municipalities, that's going to have to come through us. The other municipality, like the cities or the school districts aren't going to have the authority to grant that relief. So.
And then I, then I, based on what we went to, like the prorate, I think is a, is also a prorating through for the year. So those are the four things that pop in my mind. You asked, Chairman asked about insurance. I agree that I think insurance is structured. I don't think there are any policies that cover taxes, but they might. For that. So natural disaster, county tax, taxes only, in my opinion, all buildings and prorate. That's somewhere. Commissioner Howe.
So the reason this came up is because it was a timing thing. A tornado came through, people's houses were destroyed and then there's a tax bill and we're going after them to pay a tax bill and the house is not even there. So came up with the idea that, you know, in that situation, there ought to be a way to provide relief in that situation. Even if someone did have insurance, they're going to have to replace their dwelling space. You know, there's a lot of other things goes into placing your home besides just the structure. There's all kinds of other expenses involved in this. It's, it truly is a hardship. And so there's also an awareness and please explain to me, I'm probably going to say this wrong, but when you pay your taxes in December and May, you're actually paying taxes in arrears. You're paying for time that's already, you've already had in that home. So I don't know if the December and May payment are, are both for the previous year.
Yeah. So for example, for 2025, when you go to pay your first half taxes in December, that's for that's based on the 2025 values. So you're paying it essentially in first half at the very end of the year and then the second half in the next calendar year in May.
And so because of that, you know, people, people have already lived in the home. The home was existing when, you know, before the disaster happened. And there was a thought that, you know, it, does it make sense for someone to pay that bill? In some ways you could make the argument, yes, they should still pay the bill. Nevertheless, I think in that situation, we wanted to provide, if you will, a little bit of relief to someone who's in this life-changing event. And again, it was for, initially it was for, you know, larger natural disasters that impacted multiple homes. It wasn't designed to be, you know, a single, a single residence that had a a fire and they had insurance. That wasn't the intent of this at all. In that particular situation, you know, there's a lot of community help. There's Red Cross, there's churches, there's neighbors, there's family that can respond to provide help to someone who's going through a problem on an individual home issue, you know, situation. But it's a natural disaster and you've got 50 homes. That's a lot different. And the, the, the community doesn't have as much ability to provide that much help in that situation. So anyway, I think the bill initially made some sense. But these, these changes to the bill, I think have really destroyed the intent of this. And so I would rather see a policy whereby staff can take the application and through policy can make a, an assessment whether this is qualified to go before the BOCC for an abatement or not. I think. can make a an assessment whether this is qualified to go before the BOCC for an abatement or not. I would love to see see it be natural disasters. I don't know, we ought to necessarily, you know, by policy, say it's only for the county. I think we should talk to our other taxing jurisdictions and see whether or not they can stomach, if you will, a large abatement. If you wiped out, let's say, one half of our city, I would talk to what Utah and other taxing jurisdictions and find out what do they want us to do? I think we would have the authority to abate that or not abate that, but that might need to come before the commission to have an actual vote regarding the other jurisdictions in that situation. So I would rather see it, you know, permissive to us to have that deliberative decision if that was to happen. So I'm not sure why by policy, you know, necessarily say we'll never do it for other jurisdictions. I don't, I'm not sure I would do that necessarily. But I do like the idea of, you know, making this basically be a natural disaster based. Also, it should not be for every building. It should be a homestead. In fact, at the time, it was it was geared towards the homeowner that's living in the home. So if you're a renter, it's not for a landlord. They changed that also. So the way this is always being interpreted now, if you're a landlord and your renter has been displaced through a natural disaster, that the landlord gets the tax abatement. That was not, that was not in the original bill. You had to be the owner of the property and it had to be a homestead that you owned. And so to me, those are the, those are the parts I would like to go back to that by policy. I think that's reasonable. Otherwise, I'd rather just, if we can get to that level, I'd rather just repeal this entirely and say we're not going to do any at all. So.
Thank you, Chairman. How exactly will somebody even know about this? And the reason I ask, because we've went through this a couple of times, had a house burnt to the ground and had to rebuild and we had to pay the property taxes on it the whole time. And anytime we'd ask for any guidance, we really didn't get any information. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out how a taxpayer even know.
Yeah, and that I can't really speak to.
I'll take time. Clerk's office administers this program. So Kelly's here, Kelly Arnold's here. My Kelly, just give some thoughts to that question and even welcome you to provide your insight into this program.
Yeah. So we haven't really, it's not something we necessarily advertise, but you know, they know about it. The background on this is Diane Lefter wrote an article after this, the disaster that we had ten years ago or whenever it was and kind of got this thing going and gotten legislative attention. So but so, yeah, it's not something that's out there that's really public. We haven't promoted it, but it's something that's been available. Trying to think a couple of comments. We do, just for the other jurisdictions that are involved in this, we do send a letter to them when we get the application, that this is going to be on the on the agenda. We let them know when it is. So if they have concerns about, you know, hey, this can take a bunch of money out of our township budget or whatever, they can come speak and talk to you guys at the meeting. So I really think through that if you're considering doing like a county portion only, I'd really think through that that part of it. So the commercial, we, yeah, we have not, we've had a couple of applications for commercial that we've essentially have denied because it's is not something that's been part of our policy. Personal opinion, I'd tell you to really think through that if you ever considered opening it up for commercial, because it's kind of I don't know, Pandora's box or whatever you want to say, because you could have significant tax loss. I mean, as far as out of our, not just ours, but the other jurisdictions. So.
Kelly, Justin's on board too. Wants to make a quick comment. He's on on Zoom. Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Justin Waggoner County Counselor. I did want to add that, and this was several years ago. But I do recall that in this, I'm probably talking seven, eight years ago, that I believe that M A B C D staff, when folks would come in for a demolition permit and that kind of stuff would make folks aware of this option. For example, their house had burned down and been substantially destroyed. So I think there were, there had been some outreach at various times. I think that could certainly be done. If it's already being done by M A B C D staff now, it could be something that'd be done to Commissioner Blue Boss's question.
That'd be nice if we could have somewhere in the process or and I think that probably appropriate time when full of demolition. Do you meet these conditions? It's still maybe
like for relaxation in your property taxes.
Thank you.
Chairman, if it's okay. I, so I was one of the first, I first spoke to this, but based on the feedback that I've heard, Commissioner Howell and what you've said, Kelly, it I would lean more to exactly what you guys said. I I just kind of threw out the fourth things right away without without any feedback. So.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying.
Make sure you knew that we do discuss with the other jurisdictions.
Yeah.
Each is case by case. So.
I respect that.
Well, it feels like that we do want to have some sort of revision. Am I reading the room correctly? And
I want to make sure I have this summarized correctly. So currently, the way the policy is, when we, when the commission weighs these taxes, it's all taxes, not just county taxes, it's schools, cities, townships, all taxing entities. And I'm hearing the discussion and we'll prepare this. You guys will have to actually talk about this publicly and make a vote on it, but that we continue it for residential properties only. It has to be a can't be a house fire. It has to be a mass catastrophe, an emergency or something different than natural disaster. And Julie Simpson or somebody from the state has to declare that such. We can craft it for that amendment and then we can talk about the marketing point of that as well, what we do to make sure that this is public. I mean, you guys talking about it, it will be public, so it'll 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 make the notes that day, but put something in process to make sure that people know about it. We can prepare that. You guys can publicly discuss it. Is there any other questions we can answer today technically?
I think what Commissioner Howell said, the intent was to help the renter, the the citizen that's lost.
homeowner. I think it's important that it's a residence only owner occupied.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the in the event of a natural disaster, and I don't know, it's probably Lindsay, but this might be for you or maybe Rusty Adam, if Julie was here, she'd probably answer it. If there's a declaration of a natural disaster, how large scale casualty, how are local communities made whole? Is there a FEMA dollars or there? I'm trying to think what the, if we lost, God forbid, if you lost, I hate saying something like this, but you lost half a city. I mean, how does a local government become reimbursed for the loss of taxation that would come through something like this?
So there's not really, through FEMA, it's not really about a loss of taxation, right? It's about a reimbursement of costs to respond.
Okay.
And in terms of a loss of taxation, we do have, for our own properties, obviously, we're covered by insurance. We do have some business interruption coverage. I would have to look to see how much that is to but if it's a large scale event, there's not going to be enough insurance to make us whole. And a large part of that is because we have, and that's a large part why we keep our robust fund balance to allow us to respond in the short term and we don't have those dollars and I'll refer to Tom.
And and that's kind of where the discussion on, you know, the township arose from is that because this is a permissive, not a required thing, the the policy currently as it's drafted allows for the commission to say, hey, there's where you're losing out on too much of the tax base with this incident and you can waive all or part of that relief in a situation where you're where that would happen. Yeah.
Okay. I would, we've been through this a couple of times. I'm just we really, I'd like to have Julie here, but the concept of the of the FEMA management is to come in and help the governments. So we had floods back in fifteen and seventeen where we had fairly significant flooding. And we kept copious notes through emergency management on everything that we spent, fire department time, sheriff department time, public works time. And it has to hit a certain minimum threshold before you're even eligible for anything. And I'm looking at Lindsay and I might query Justin. I'm not sure, even after that massive flooding we had in those two years, if we got a nickel back from federal government, it is extremely.
There is no money really for from FEMA for that.
I don't think we've ever met a threshold. The last tornado we had out east that that went into Andover dollar value of damage didn't meet the threshold, the flooding instance that you talked about. Unless the community.
Fourteen years ago, there was a significant event enough that we had FEMA relief because I was in budget at the time, but it's been that long since anything has.
And FEMA is their help is to the government, the local governments, not homeowners, not business owners. It is to the governments who are responding to these catastrophes.
Okay. I just went to emergency management training in Andover, I'm sorry, in Augusta last week and they said the reason that that wasn't qualified is because of homeowner insurance covered most of the loss. And so there wasn't really an un, an unre, a reimbursed loss to the people being impacted by the by the disaster. So.
The closest we got, I remember we had big ditch structural damage in the floods and that was what we were really concerned about is that that was going to turn into mega millions that we were going to and it it turned out it did not rise to the threshold, but it's designed for that kind of catastrophic.
Yeah. Some of the federal relief comes in the form of low interest or loans for private citizens.
This is good. I mean, obviously there's two sides of this. One side is that if someone's lost their home to a natural disaster, obviously we want to give them relief, not make them pay taxes on a property that is no longer usable. On the other side of this, we've got to make sure that we can continue to provide core service, public safety, public works and with the tax base that we we have to be careful abating all of it. So.
On the other side, if
That's challenging.
If the property was undeveloped, they would pay taxes. It would just be a small amount.
Yeah, okay. I have one more idea here. So again, these are the talking points, how we come up with it. Must be a natural disaster and I think declared by at least the county or the state. And number two, I think it should be at least two or more homes. It's only one home. It's not, it's not the magnitude that we're talking about. So it's two or more homes. Being qualified event. Number three, I think permissive is still part of this policy. Nothing mandates what we have to do. It just gives us permission to do stuff if we are so led. Number three, or number four, number four, must be a homeowner homestead that are impacted. And then I think we have to, we would continue to have the discretion of whether or not it includes other taxing jurisdictions or not based on the data provided by the case, if you will, and the other taxing jurisdictions. Then if there's one of these calendar issues, that a credit is still possible rather than a rebate or and an abatement, if they've already made their payment, we can credit the property, the parcel back, not if they've changed locations, they say they moved, whether you're crediting the parcel or crediting the person, I don't know how that.
That would move with the person. So they could apply it to any property they.
It needs to be just clarified in the policy. And then I would like to have staff essentially filter these if they're not qualified based on policy. They would have the authority to reject the application if only if it's qualified. It's going to be for the BOCC for approval. Thank you.
All right, Tom, you got what you need? Okay. And this, Tom, thank you too. Appreciate it. All right, next up.
You have to get through me to get to that, sir.
We've looked forward to this one.
Well, I don't know if you do, but I sure do. It's one of my one of the actual, yes, it is long, sir. I can hear you. Anything else you want to say before I get started? Well, go right ahead. I'll look forward to hearing your version of the presentation. Okay. So this is one of the most interesting presentations I ever get to do. It is long. I will not lie. But I do think it's fascinating. So what we want to talk about today is a little bit of where we've been since the Great Recession. And the reason we use that as kind of a key date is everything changed after the Great Recession with how we came back with how the the entire economy responded. And so it's important that we use that as a threshold because everything that we knew before, every recovery pattern that we had seen before was completely different here. So what we're going to start with is some actions that we have taken through the budget. And then we're going to talk about why, why we had to do what we did. This is not going to be the most flattering presentation for the state. And that's okay. It is what it is. So first of all, we know the Great Recession started late in two thousand eight. But we didn't actually start to feel the impacts of that here locally until about two thousand ten. So what you'll see here are budgets. So again, just like you know, every budget is adopted the August before. So what you're going to be looking at are decisions made in the August before the budget year in which we're talking about. So I think that's important context to remember. So in two thousand eight, we had just had a mill levy rate increase to about thirty one point three mils because at the time we expected a jail expansion and we knew that we were going to construct the National Center for Aviation Training because at that time, the county was in charge of technical education related to state action. So that was a pretty significant debt issuance that was done for NCAT back in two thousand eight. We will pay it off in two thousand twenty eight. So just have that in the back of your minds. In two thousand nine, the commission had heard loud and clear that raising the mill levy rate was not an action that the community expected. And so an action was taken to defer that jail bed expansion and also to form up what you now know today as the CJCC, the group that would come up with alternatives, jail alternatives to try and reduce the need for that jail expansion. In two thousand ten, for that budget, we suspended performance pay. We implemented a pay adjustment of two percent for employees who made less than seventy five thousand dollars. Another half mil was cut. And we started down the path of strategic reductions. And I want to call that out to you because what you're going to see from here forward up until recent years is limited pay. And that's going to explain a lot of how we got into the situation we did during the pandemic. So in two thousand eleven, again, another mill reduction at two percent performance base pool deferred projects or capital projects were deferred that could be deferred. And then they started annual recurring operations through some short-term cuts that year. We also implemented a special voluntary retirement program that ended up eliminating a hundred nineteen FTEs, but only about half of those positions were actually cut. The intention had been to find lower cost folks to come into those positions. Unfortunately, because of the way the program was structured, we actually didn't wind up saving any money through that program. So if that's ever anything the commission wants to consider, again, we'll have to talk very seriously about a different way to do it because that was not successful. So in two thousand twelve, that's when we really started to feel the effects of the recession and Lauren and her retreat presentation tomorrow is going to show you what the forecast looked like at this time and how we were on the path to insolventcy, not just falling below our twenty percent minimum, but actually going insolvent. So we had to take that pretty seriously. And you can see that because of the size and scope of the projected deficit, we did across the board cuts, six point six percent cuts to non-public safety and three point three percent to public safety. And you even think about a one or two percent cut now and how impactful that was. It had a huge impact at the time. You can see in that first year, we actually ended up eliminating sixty two positions. We held another twenty eight vacant and unfunded, mostly in elected official offices. And then we started to try and shift, as Tim can attest, we tried to start to shift as many positions as we could to available grant funds. So in two thousand thirteen, we had our first flat budget. What was approved in two thousand twelve became the basis of the budget for our contractuals, our commodities, our equipment. Obviously, every year we have to do a refresh on positions and who's in those. And you can see that we went through strategic reductions for that. We did a prioritization inventory and we cut another seven point two million in recurring costs out of the budget and cut another sixty nine FTEs. Also, that was a period where we cut funding to external agencies to bring it in line more with what the county was experiencing. We did wind up the year with a little more cash than expected, and so we were able to set aside two and a half million dollars. When you see the words election fleet in here, I want to be crystal clear that I'm not talking about cars. We're talking about the equipment that's used. So please know when you hear election fleet, that's what we're referencing. So in two thousand fourteen, we were a little more optimistic, thought we should start coming out of the recession like we had in prior years. Unfortunately, that wasn't quite the case. We did a market pace study, the first ever green study that you'll hear about. In general, at that time, we were told that we were six point seven percent below market. But again, we weren't rebounding like we had hoped from the recession. And so in general, unless there was a special position, county employees received a one point two percent bump even though we were six point seven percent behind market. And this is where I think we really start to mark that is stepping out of step on compensation and why we had to do so much fixing the last few years. So shifting to two thousand fifteen, then we were able to save significant dollars by moving to a self-funded health insurance. So shifting to 2015, then we were able to save significant dollars by moving to a self-funded health insurance plan, millions of dollars through that that has proved to be lucrative for the county in the long run. Maybe lucrative is the wrong word. It hasn't made profit, but it has certainly reduced our cost increases over time relative to the private market. And of course, we were still struggling to come out of the recession. And what we did, not what we did, what the state started then was the mortgage registration fee elimination. You're going to see on a chart that we have for you here on the third page. We'll get into this in a minute. But you can see what those fees used to be. On the third page, on page ninety three, we were around seven or eight million dollars a year. We're now down to about four million. And so that started the decline of revenues in those years. So while we thought we were able to come out of a recession with moderated assessed value growth, we had now this challenge to address. So then in 2016, again, anticipating financial impacts, we limited our performance based pool. We again have a flat budget. You can see that there were things that were added and eliminated based on priorities. And of course, in 2016, the state adopted the property tax lid. So then in 2017, oops, sorry. In 2017, we had a two and a half percent performance based pool. We did have some additional funds to try and address compression. And then, of course, F L S A rules were changed related to overtime. So we tried to add some of that in. We did have the law enforcement training center and that is the year we actually spent six million dollars to replace our election equipment fleet. So in 2018, that budget year is actually the first year that the property tax lid took effect. Obviously, we have never had to have a public election since that time. So we have lived under that property tax lid in that time. And that budget year, we had a mill levy rate resolution that was adopted. I think we've talked about that a few times in the last few months. So I just want to make sure to reference that that is kind of the time period that we're talking about. In 2019, we had a two and a half percent flat pay adjustment. We added some resources and slowly started to grow what we were able to put back in, even though we were still living under flat budgets. We didn't have any significant budget cuts in that year. And then we get to 2020 and things were looking good in July, 2019. We had a nice pay adjustment, a flat pay adjustment. We planned for a pay structure adjustment. We had set aside some additional budget to do some targeted pay adjustments to try and address those areas that were furthest behind. We expanded health options for employees. We had a new strategic plan. And then here comes March and COVID nineteen hits. So we had a mid-year furlough where there were voluntary furloughs and also involuntary furloughs for a period of time to try and save money when we weren't able to operate. We offered COVID stipends to those employees who had to come to work and be on the front line for a few pay periods. We also did year end bonuses in lieu of those targeted adjustments. We were able to afford three hundred dollars for employees as year end bonuses, excluding commissioners and leadership team and those folks. We did receive about a hundred eight million dollars in carers funding plus state spark funding for unemployment. And again, that was a, it was awarded in April and we had until December to spend it. And so that was almost entirely from the county perspective, almost entirely spent on response. But the county also allocated funds to cities because unlike ARPA, cities didn't receive carers funding. So Cedric County allocated significant funds to cities, also to K through twelve schools. They had received S R funds, but it took a while for the feds to put those together. So all K through twelve schools received funds from the county. We also had public health and social service applications where folks could put in the same eligibility criteria for us that it basically had to be unplanned, unbudgeted in response to COVID. We're able to reimburse for that. So quite a bit of work was done in 2020 associated with that carers funding. And then on the next slide, I'm going to jump ahead just for a moment. This is something that I think sometimes we forget, but was really important. And that was the federal government put out a mandate that we were to offer paid leave for employees under certain circumstances. And that's spelled out on this Department of Labor screen here. And basically, we wound up paying nine hundred twenty one thousand dollars for employees to be able to stay home because either they had COVID or they were caring for someone with COVID or kids were out of school because of closures or other things. So thankfully, we did have carers funding to pay for that, but that was also a pretty significant lift for employees in a very uncertain time, especially with the furloughs happening. So of course, in 2020, July and August of 2020 was the midst of the worst of the pandemic locally. And so frankly, the budget was done with just trying to hold tight, not knowing what to expect in the coming months because we thought we were going to end for a two week duration of a pandemic and it was turning into months with vaccines still yet to come around. So we did not do an employee adjustment for pay at all in 2021. We had already started to see employees leaving. Obviously, being a first responder in a COVID situation would be terrifying. And a lot of employees didn't want to deal with that. And so Sheena can speak to the very high volume of turnover that we had in that time and then difficulty recruiting folks to come into the county. So the legislature was busy in 2021, though, and they did pass the revenue neutral rate law. And we were able to deal with that, thankfully. They also have provided reimbursement so far for the costs associated with that, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So thankfully, that's not an unfunded mandate. There is a law that's sitting before the tax committee now that would extend that reimbursement through 2029. But I haven't seen any action on that to actually extend. We did have ARPA that was passed in March of 2021. We got a hundred point two million for that. We used twenty one million almost immediately for premium pay to pay those employees who had to be either onsite and dealing with the public or onsite and exposed to others. Like if you think about nine one one, we had four different categories of employees who were eligible for premium pay for a certain amount of time who could earn up to ten thousand dollars per. And we wound up giving those dollars out to two thousand one hundred thirty five employees. Wasn't under the law supposed to be a retention tool, but that's what we were hoping would be the effect. And unfortunately, it was not as successful as maybe we would have hoped. So here we come into the 2022 budget. We are now in the 10th year of flat budgets after we had already done reductions across the board cuts, plus those strategic reductions the next year. And so compensation had to be the focus. We are a service delivery organization and we did not have butts in seats to deliver services. And that is a critical problem. So this commission authorized a compensation focus in the budget. And so more than sixteen hundred positions were reclassified after their job descriptions were updated and evaluated. If they were not, if they didn't receive compensation through that reclassification, they received a two percent general pay adjustment. That also is one of every eleven years, we have a twenty seventh pay period just because of the way timing falls. And so we actually had the additional cost of a pay period, which is north of four million dollars. Thankfully, that's a one time thing every eleven years. We were able to start adding in some adjustments to those core functions, including a grant administrator, because we were hoping to be able to go out through that strategic plan and supplement the funding that we did have with grants also paid by other taxpayers, make sure we were getting our fair share back. And then, of course, you can see we had the supply chain inflation and workforce issues that everybody else in the entire world was dealing with as well. And so mid-year, we had some pay plans that were adopted corrections, two for, two for corrections, two for concare. The sheriff's plan was updated. Obviously, he's on a five percent step. EMS and fire were adopted with three percent steps. And then other employees had a two percent mid-year general pay adjustment. So we were able to try and quickly respond to that. So 2023, that's when we were really trying to shore up our workforce. And so there was a seven percent increase to the pay structure for general pay plan employees. And incumbents actually received an eight percent increase. We still had other issues. And so we were trying to address those at the same time. The commission was invested in the mental health and substance abuse coalition and trying to put money toward that. Mental health issues were prevalent, abundant in our community, even more so after COVID. And so there was a focus in com care on the Grow Your Own program to try and have some additional support there. We were able to increase election worker pay, thankfully, after the pandemic to get some more folks in. And then district court attorney fees went up. And as you well know, we entered into the M O A to do the mental health hospital. Now, ARPA was able to be used in those years to offset costs that otherwise would have been borne by the county. As you saw in reports that we've sent you, we spent a significant portion of funds on court backlog and public health response. Otherwise, we wouldn't have necessarily been in the position we are in today where those things are mostly stable and we've rebounded on both of those fronts. So in 2024, for that budget year, again, continued focus on compensation. And I would say, I think Sheena would agree that it has been tremendously successful. I think last year we had an eight percent voluntary turnover rate, which is the lowest that I have seen since I've been at the county. Typically, we count on fifteen percent. And that's what you've seen in your forecast is that we count on fifteen percent turnover, not anymore. And that's a good problem to have. So there were some adjustments for the general pay plan after those adjustments, the prior year to those other plans. We were able to reinstate that nine one one pay plan and incumbents were able to get a six percent increase. There are also, as you well know, two mid-year adjustments for sheriff pay in response, direct response to what City of Wichita was able to do with their law enforcement. Also a mid-year pay adjustment for the DA's office, again, because losing positions to other area agencies. Other positions were added to kind of what I think we have called core functions or those that are state mandated. And then you all were able to reduce the middle levy rate. In 2025, that was the thirteenth year of flat budgets. But for those strategic adjustments that folks have been able to come and ask for you from through decision package, there were various general pay adjustments and scale adjustments across all plans. You did add some positions. Only seven positions were added out of ARPA, which is significant when you can think that at any one time you had between eighty and a hundred and ten positions funded through ARPA for health response. So I think that's a pretty significant win. There were some other increases and reductions as we were looking down the barrel of a structural imbalance. So that gets us to where we are kind of today with our budget process and what you're going to start to hear about tomorrow at your retreat. I wanted to spend just a few moments talking about how the state has kind of tried to limit our property taxes or ensure that we have transparency. And so I just want to spend a moment talking through these. So what you can see is from 2008 through 2016, those budget years, Cedric County and the Fire District as a special district lived under what's called truth in taxation. And you can see a quick summary here, basically that target mill, the prior year levy was the basis. And then there were some common sense adjustments that were allowed to be incorporated. If there was a change in use for property, if there was new property that was added, let's say you're a city and you annexed property, you grew, you were able to include that. Obviously, the county doesn't grow. So that was not really eligible for us. CPI for the prior year, and there was nothing that stopped you from doing it as a governing body. But what you had to do is if you did vote to exceed this amount, this computation, then publication had to be made of how each of you voted in the official newspaper of the county. That was it for both fire and county. So that was the case through 2016. And of course, then we had the property tax lid. And because the state listened to us and changed that property tax lid to actually go into effect a year later, there was a period of time where the county, counties and cities lived under no regulation for one year. And so that was 2017. So then counties and cities only, so no special districts, no school districts, nothing like that, lived under the property tax lid. And this was a slightly more robust version of truth and taxation. It allowed for those same improvements, but then it also allowed for when TIFs expired and that property came back on the tax roll, which is the whole goal. That was not held against you. A government wasn't penalized for that. If we had debt service that had to be issued, we weren't penalized for that because we had covenants that require that taxes can be and will be imposed to pay for those amounts. If there are special assessments, those weren't considered. If there were court judgments that had to be paid, that wasn't, we were allowed to take that out. If there were unfunded federal and state mandates and we could quantify what those were, we weren't penalized for those. And then there were exceptions for law enforcement, fire and EMS cost increases. Then what really helped us was the fact that we levy taxes on behalf of W S U. We were not penalized for that one point five mil amount. We were able to take that out. And it allowed for a look back on CPI of an average of five years. That gave you a computation. And if you wanted to exceed that, you had to give notice to the election commissioner and then hold a public vote. And so you would have one budget that would be within the property tax lid and you would have one budget that was not. And then you would see how the voters went and you would have one of those budgets depending on how folks voted. So we were under that for four budget years on the county side. The Fire District continued to live under truth and taxation for that period as a special district. Then in 2022, the revenue neutral rate went into effect. And so what that does is basically looks at whatever the dollar value was of your levy for the last budget year. You have to stick with that. There's no exceptions. There's no adjustments. But if W S U wants to exceed or has to exceed, we don't get any credit for that. We either have to cut into the rest of the county's tax levy to offset that. Or we have to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So how that works is a public hearing is obviously required every year on the budget. The state allows us to have a revenue neutral rate hearing. I shouldn't say allows, mandates a revenue neutral rate hearing. We're allowed to have it at the same time as the mandated public budget hearing. And the commission or the governing body of Fire District must take a vote at the conclusion of that revenue neutral rate public hearing and say, it's our intent to exceed. And then if so, you take a vote on that and then you pass a budget in the next agenda item or the next action. So that is what we are living under today. So the state, well, let's talk about costs of doing business. So just like everybody else, we have dealt with inflation. Inflation since 2008 has gone up forty two percent. However, Cedric County's costs in many areas have greatly exceeded inflation. That number one listed there, property insurance, has gone up nearly one thousand two hundred percent. Our I T maintenance costs, which again, not necessarily a bad thing. We like technology. It's efficient. But those costs have increased three hundred twenty nine percent in that time. Our capers and K P and F rates that are set by the state have increased to the point that our pension costs have gone up a hundred fifty three percent. Our inmate medical costs have gone up a hundred five percent. Our employee health insurance costs have gone up seventy two percent. And actually, we're very fortunate on that side because many other places have gone up ten to twelve percent per year. This is over a sixteen year period and we've gone up seventy two percent, but it still greatly exceeds inflation. And inmate food has actually gone up fifty eight percent. And what's kind of depressing about that is our inmate population was down significantly in 2024. And costs are still up fifty eight percent, twenty, two thousand eight versus 2024. So we're going to focus on our property tax supported funds. So we have five county property tax supported funds. The rest of the funds have a special revenue source. So I only want to talk about the county property tax supportive funds. And that's what this sheet. So I only want to talk about the county property tax supportive funds and that's what this sheet is solely focused on. So everything I'm going to talk to you about now comes from this sheet. If you look at row, and I gotta put my glasses on, hopefully you all brought yours too. Row nine, our total expenses in these funds have gone up thirty five percent. But again, inflation up forty two percent. You can see that in row six. Adopted FTEs in these funds are nearly flat. Well, and I just see that I have a reference error. I'm going to print you guys some new copies after this. Um, but we've had point six percent growth in adopted FTEs. And overtime costs are up forty nine percent in that time. Now, for those who got to see this presentation last year, this is actually good news because last year this was north of sixty percent. So we're seeing it moderate, which is good and what we would expect when we have ninety two percent of our positions filled. And then property tax reliance in these funds has gone from fifty one percent in two thousand eight to fifty eight percent in two thousand twenty twenty four. Well, why, you might ask? Let's talk about it. Here is my favorite slide. So inflation has gone up forty two percent. We have operated this lovely handout. Sixteen programs, it's the stapled one, um, sixteen programs on behalf of the state in these years. And if we go to the bottom of page two, you're going to see in row eighty five that our costs have increased thirty three percent in this time period, still less than inflation, good for us. But that equates to sixty three million dollars more spent on these programs since two thousand eight. Plus, we've spent another forty one million dollars in our ARPA funds to support state programs. That was our discretionary money. You all opted to do that for court backlog and things like that. In the same time period, state aid for these programs has actually gone down by eight million dollars. And our levy has increased forty eight percent, which granted is more than inflation. But it's still sixty million dollars, which is less than the costs we have had to spend on these mandated programs. So what we can conclude is literally every penny of your increased tax levy has gone to support mandated programs without funding from the state. And at the same time, you all have been able to reduce your mill levy rate by eight percent. This only goes through twenty twenty four. You actually did more for twenty twenty five. And I strongly suspect we'll do the same for twenty twenty six. And yet another wonderful thing, the price of government for Sedgwick County has decreased in that time. Now, the price of government is a really interesting statistic that we have a whole different presentation on that we're not going to get into today. But what you need to know is it's the revenue that comes into the government relative to the um total amount of money in the community, the total amount of personal income in the community. And so this actually has dollar signs on it. It shouldn't be dollar signs. It's actually less than a penny per dollar. It's not really almost ninety six cents. It's point nine six cents, almost a penny. And adding fuel to the fire are other actions that the state has taken. So you heard last year a lot about the local ad valorem tax reduction. Sorry, I'll talk faster. Um, since two thousand two, that has not been funded. Since two thousand eight, the practical effect of that is seventy three point one million dollars that the county otherwise would have had. That would have been more than enough to cover all of those cost increases that you saw in those programs. There also has not been funding for the city county revenue sharing program. If we just look at back to two thousand eight, that's another forty six million dollars of revenue that used to come to the county, the state kept, and we don't get that back now. There was also, and this is something that I think is really important for this body to understand when it advocates, is the state decided to take some economic development action that was uniform and equal and and fair. And they exempted commercial and machinery equipment, which is personal property. And it's something that Mark talked with you about yesterday. It's called CIME. That's what this references when you see it on the charts. Since two thousand eight, we can specifically show based on the data that we have lost sixty nine point one million dollars because of that action that has been saved by commercial property tax owners. And then, of course, we had the phase out of the mortgage registration fee. Now, this one, I'm a little less in love with the statistic because we know that there was tremendous upheaval in the market with the very low interest rates during the pandemic. And so if all of those mortgages that were refinanced had been paid, we would have received more than four hundred eighteen million dollars. But even I will admit to you that it is bananas to think of having that much money flow into county government. Um, I don't even know what we would have done in that scenario with that much funding. So the bottom line is the cost for these mandatory services didn't just magically go away when revenue streams were cut. Especially because we're mandated to provide these programs. We are a political subdivision of the state. We are a creature of the state, unlike cities that are incorporated and have their own home rule and exist because they want to exist. We exist because the state tells us to exist. Because we have had to shift the burden from commercial, from state. Our residential taxpayers have had to pick up a lot of that cost. And in recent years, the state has done some things to offset costs. You'll see it on the sheriff's section of your um stapled long sheet. They have started providing reimbursement for inmates who are held while they're awaiting competency evaluation. You heard this year that we wanted that for juveniles as well. And um, and then obviously they have helped a lot out of com care. But the numbers on your sheet here take all of that into account already. And so I just want to end with this picture. This is the final slide. And this shows your assessed value by category, your residential, your farm, your ag and your commercial. That top blue line is residential. That's why taxpayers are upset. And certainly we can understand that. But we are creatures of the state. The state has made a number of decisions to eliminate revenue streams. We can only generate the revenue that they tell us we can generate as a county. Um, they have limited our regards there, but we still have to provide service. It's no wonder that this has happened. But I would tell you and I would be able, I think, to make a convincing argument that based on what you see here with your property tax dollars, this county government has been highly efficient and effective at providing services below inflation. And but for the state's actions, I think we would be in a very different picture. And I will say, um, you'll hear it in a week and a half, but we just went through a credit rating analysis because we're about to issue that debt. Uh, we again got a brand new, fresh, sparkling, clean AAA. Um, just earlier this week with a stable outlook. So that's, and they talk about exceptional financial management and that goes back to this board and its decisions. So again, I will make the case to you all that you're not the problem. So with that, what questions can I answer?
Hi, Lindsay, very good presentation. As always, there's a lot of information, lots happening in sixteen years here. Um, all right, commissioners, any questions?
Lindsay, um, thank you, obviously. Can if on slide, what I want to try to do is say on slide fourteen, let's say, can can we be able to tell uh and share to the public that this first couple of bullet, I like to say, because of the state mandated costs that we have to incur equals X. And because they eliminated some programs, we lost seventy three million cents oh eight, forty five million cents oh eight. I'd I'd like to be able to say, even if if they didn't, if they didn't cut those funding, it it's not like they had to cut it all. They just cut a third of it, we would be.
Well, and if you look on page three of this big sheet, the staple sheet, it shows six hundred five million as our total impact from all of those cuts.
Where's that? What line?
Uh, row ninety nine. Hey, I didn't hit a hundred. Good for me.
Six hundred five million is what.
That's more than our entire budget.
So.
So yes, I mean, depending on what narrative you want to say there.
Yeah, it could have been machinery equipment or could have been anything, although machinery equipment, I I think there's probably been a bonus in that.
Oh, I think it has helped. Yeah, absolutely.
That's not, I.
It's good for business, but it hurts for residential.
Yeah, M and E doesn't bother me as much as some of these other programs.
Yeah, I, what bothers me specifically about LAVTR and city county revenue sharing is we used to get that money. And then the state kept it and hasn't given it back when they quit funding it. So just give it back to us then.
Yeah. As we go into the budget year, then I'll I'll yield to others. Um, what kind of point, and I know it was kind of contentious on your slide three back in twenty fourteen, that was before, yeah, I think Commissioner Howe was here. But that last, you didn't mention it, but but the county took a a very difficult move to close JRBR, that last sentence. But they closed it in defense of that. And and I know Commissioner Howe was a big opponent to to still fund it. And and I respect that totally of the impact of what they had. But the decision was made because the state was not funding.
We were receiving a hundred twenty six dollars a day and spending two hundred one dollars a day.
So they made the diff, the county made the difficult decision to say, okay, we're done with that program.
Yes.
So these other, how many programs we have?
Sixteen.
Sixteen programs.
Well, the state mandated. This was not a state mandated program. That's why we were able to close it. I'm sorry.
Or there are other.
Day reporting is another one that was closed in later years.
Is any other that we would elevate itself to the top to say, this is a difficult decision if we wanted to eliminate that program.
I think.
Not state mandate, due to the state mandate.
I think last year we were able to get from departments lists of mandatory and discretionary programs.
Okay.
I wouldn't say that any of those are going to be as clear cut where we can say, here's how much it costs per day and here's how much we're getting per day. But we can certainly have that conversation if that's the way the commission would like to go.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for this summary.
It's slide thirteen, Lindsay. We've said this several times, sixteen programs expenditures are up thirty three percent. State aid has decreased eighteen percent. Said that a lot. These mandated programs, some of the discussions, and we talk a lot about the tag fund with treasurer's office. That's a bill that we're pushing heavily right now. That'll cost the county taxpayer nine hundred thousand dollars plus in this next year. The, I guess the option we're going to have in budget season is in these state mandated, because we have to do some of these things. It's the level of service we can do then. If we're having to meet the gaps with local property tax dollars, the discussion is, do we keep meeting that gap to keep the service up? Or do we eliminate that local property tax support and say, this is a state funded agency. The state needs to meet that gap and it will impact services. I think the discussion needs to be
Absolutely.
our play in that to say, do we put pressure on the state to do this? But what is the cost to the local community residents who enjoy the good services we're providing? I'm not saying that's an easy decision, but I think that's where this is going in some of these departments.
Well, and that shown in your rows eighty to eighty four, it shows those dollars, the amount of money we've we've spent and the amount of subsidy that has gone to those.
Yeah, so the the balance between level of service with the level of gap funding that the county is providing on on these sixteen departments is so hard. Yeah. It's really hard because we want to get good service. So it'll be an interesting discussion. Any other questions? Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Just a couple of comments. So um, you use the word flat budgets through this presentation. There's a lot of changes in in the budget year to year, all kinds of changes. So how do you define the word flat budget?
So while Lori and Showalter Arias here, she would like to field this question. Um, or maybe she can just correct me if I screw it up, so I don't put her on the spot. Uh, but basically each year, the budget office goes into our budgeting system and looks at what last year's contractual commodity equipment uh transfer out amounts were in our property tax funds or any certified funds. And says, if the commission gave you a one-time increase last year, we're taking that out. If you got recurring money through a decision package and the commission chose to increase your budget, fine, we're going to let you keep that in, but you don't get any more. And so what you all wind up seeing then through a budget process is a budget that is but for personnel. Um, and but for like admin charges or fleet charges, a budget that is flat with the year before. We expect folks to live within the resources they're given unless they can come and make a compelling case to the county manager to include either in his recommended budget or to come to the commission and include. But that's why we, even things like your utilities, we make departments put in decision package requests to increase their budget for utilities. Otherwise, we expect them to figure out a way to eat that in their budget. That's what a flat budget means.
I think we should put the definition in, simplify that somehow, but put the definition in this PowerPoint because it is a little confusing to see all these changes year over year and not understand exactly what you mean by that word. So. Since I wasn't going to bring this up, but since uh previous speaker just brought up the issue of Judge of Boys Ranch, we just pointed out a couple of things here. Uh, he actually passed a law in twenty fourteen that would have addressed some of the shortfall.
Some.
Okay. And there was, there was a, the problem was, there was a a lack of belief by the state that these programs provided effective, you know, reprogramming, if you will, of these youth that were on the wrong track. And so one of the things that bill did was it created um performance measure requirements. And the county did a good job providing some therapeutic certain, you know, therapeutic effort to help these boys get on the right tack, right path. But uh, that county was paying for that. I actually came up, I don't know if you ever saw the letter, came up with eight solutions to reduce costs for that program and the county rejected it in a hole. Um, the county actually opposed the legislation that I tried to pass. And I worked with Russ Jennings that year and got that passed despite the county. The county came out against the bill. I I'm highly offended by the history uh of of how that went down. On top of that, I actually got a proviso, three quarters of a million dollars. Um, that was intended to help bridge the gap to get to a higher level of funding that would have happened had that bill actually been implemented. And the county spent through that money um in six months. They say, you know, our, our, our shortage was one point five million a year, but they went through the three, they went through seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and closed that down by June thirtieth of of the, I think it was twenty fourteen when they ran our money. So they just basically were burning cash to get through that money and they closed it down. Then we burnt, then they, then they bulldozed the facility to make it even worse. So it was hugely political. It was more about politics than substance, I think. The state of Kansas, I agree, they should have funded the program. But if you ask the people in the community, you know, it should we, should we provide one, you know, some portion of county money um, provide this uh, this resource for our community, understanding this is a a portion of one mil. Okay, even at that time, it would have been one million, I'd say one million a year, which is a lot of money. I agree. Um, but I think the community largely supported that. You know, we talk about one million a year right now. One thing about that program was it was discretionary, as is day reporting. When we closed down the day reporting program, the the community came and glued over that one too. And the whole point of that was Wichita, almost everybody in the day reporting program, Wichita had another program, it's very similar. And we had very few uh non, non Wichitaans, if you will, getting day reporting through the county. So we did that as a way to save money. And I mean, it was incredibly political. We got the tar beat out of, out of us over that issue. There is discretionary spending in our, in our budget. You know, we, we have things we're doing because we believe it's the right thing to do. And um, I will, I will argue that the state of Kansas now is realizing how battered it was. When the coast, coast down Judge of Boys Ranch, by the way, was arguably the best YRC two for criminogenic youth in the state of Kansas. Most of the other ones in the state were simply just babysitters. They didn't do a whole lot of anything. And they were largely ineffective and they were lacking data. The state of Kansas today realizes now that they've gone down, that they've, it's one pendulum, pendulum so far the other way. Then now our DA and our law enforcement are completely frustrated because we're lacking a resource that used to exist. And now they don't have that any longer because they shut down, they shut down every YRC two bed for criminogenic youth in the city of Kansas. Now there's zero. That's not the right number, which is why I'm testifying on H, on HB two, three, two, nine this year as bringing the state back into balance again. I'm not asking for three hundred beds, I'm asking for forty. I think that's what the state needs. It it's just, it's just to get us started. I think that's what the state needs. It's just, it's just to get us started. But anyway, I think the, you know, to me, the history that I know it very, very well. I will argue that it was a program that was for the city county was quite effective statewide, they said was is I don't see corrections in the room, but I believe the state said even by their own measurement, before they shut down the YRC twos in the state of Kansas, they were 47% effective. That's taken all of the state's beds into account. So that was actually surprisingly a good number, considering how many beds didn't have any, didn't provide any therapeutic services at all. And then, you know, going back to the, the mill levy target resolution. Again, this is commissioners trying to drive the process somewhat. And if you know, you know, Wichita is very proud. They've not raised their mill levy in 30 years or whatever it was they say over there. I can plot, I have a plot. I think I shared it with Ryan just a couple of days ago. That if you plot their mill levy over the last 30 years, it's gone up significantly. And why did that happen? They didn't actually vote to increase our mill levy. They didn't do that. Actually, they passed budgets. And I think their budgets were created, if you will, with last year's technical adjusted mill levy. As in almost every municipality in the entire city of Kansas does it that way. We as a, as an exception, we said, rather than using the technically adjusted mill levy, we're going to use a target mill levy. So regard, we're going to reject what, no offense to Kelly Arnold, he does a great job. But he makes adjustments based on post appeals process. And that we, they have to go in there, they adjust the mill levy to create the dollars that we passed on our budget. So there's a technically adjusted mill levy. It happens after we pass our budget. Every other one, every other municipality out there uses a technically adjusted mill levy primarily because it's slightly higher than the mill that they used to create their budget. So slight increases is captured. And over time, that adds to, that adds to the growth of the mill levy. So we said, rather than doing that, we wanted to come up with a target mill levy. That was, and if you look at our mill levy history, there was about six years there. It was really flat. The target mill levy did not go up really at all. Had technical adjustments, so it bubbled up and down to every, you know, hundreds of a mil. And it was not, it was, it was, it was very, very flat because of the consequence of that process. I think the commissioners need to decide how we're going to build our budget this year. This, I'll throw this out there. The 2025 got on your chart today because I think.
We'll start talking about it tomorrow.
Well, that's fine, but the 2025 assessed value, one mil instead of county right now is 6.952 million dollars for one mil. And I guess once Mark gets through the appeals process, they should, we're going to have another line on there for 2026. But it's going to be somewhere seven or eight percent higher than the last, we're going to be over seven, I would say around seven and a half million dollars per mil. And if we simply use that number, and even if we lower their mill levy by a mil, we're still going to see a fairly large increase in our tax collections, probably that exceeds a a what I consider a CPI driven, you know, target. So I think we'll talk about this tomorrow, but what is our solution to this? I think, again, I would agree with you. Everything looks very conservative and we've addressed a lot of staff problems the last three years especially. And I think that needed to happen to stabilize our staff situation. But I'm sure you all know, y'all felt it overnight. The community is freaking out. Because the, again, I think the media has done a poor job of explaining the appeals process, I'm sorry, the appraisal process. It's just one part of the entire process. And if we were to do what most municipalities have done in the history of governance, they would keep the mill levy from last year and capture the increase and you're going to see an 8% increase in tax collections next year. That I know that anybody up here thinks that's the right path forward, we're going to lose our jobs immediately. Okay, we just cannot. That's not a threat to anybody, any staff. I'm saying the elected officials. Like officials will be, will get the curve pretty quick.
Well, and so what you'll, I will steal a little bit of Loriann's thunder from her forecast presentation in the morning, but what you'll see is we are, we are projecting a flat mill levy rate right now. But we're expecting that the commission would allow us to capture a 5% growth per year, which is still significantly below our historic average of five and a half percent growth. Now, if the commission will not permit that, that's fine. That's the whole point of the, the conversation tomorrow. You'll also see a scenario of what, 3%? I don't know why we're laughing.
Oh, because it's going to be fun.
Okay. Well, you'll also see a scenario tomorrow that shows you what the 3% cap that's being discussed legislatively would look like as well. And that is a very scary story.
Let me ask a question. Does, does HCR 5011 or SCR 1603, do either one of those do anything on all of the Senate Bill 13 legislation?
No. Though as far as I know, we're still living under R and R, even if those come around, unless Kelly or Angela tells me I'm wrong. I don't see any mention in either of those bills that it suspends R and R.
I am curious, if we project 3%, yeah, and one of the things they're not talking about is is the appraiser is going to have to keep track of two numbers then. There's going to be a real fair market value, which they do currently. They're trying to target what it actually, and a secondary number, which is the manipulated number, either capital 3% or some type of a multi-year ruling average. So that's going to create two numbers, right? And budgets will be, will be built, if you will, around the manipulated number. I would love to know, I, I, this will apply to everything, including school funding, correct?
As far as I know, I have not seen any exemptions so far that have been put forward.
That's going to make a lawsuit pretty quick. Because the state funds part of the schools with 20, 20 mils statewide mill levy. Going to come from that. So you're talking about a, a artificially lowered number for school funding. I think we're looking at a lawsuit.
Oh, I'm quite sure you, we are.
And as a constitutional amendment, I don't know what you do with that. That's very interesting.
All that does is value. It doesn't mean the body can't still increase.
It's going to raise the 20 mils to some other number.
And they could also do a local option bond. I mean, schools would have a lot of options still. Governor, I mean, you guys could increase your mill levy, right? It has no practical effect on, it sounds good, but it has no practical effect on what governing bodies can do.
Two other pieces of history here, the truth and taxation law that passed in 2012. Your, your show dated going back to truth and taxation back to 08.
There have been different iterations. Oh, yes. There have been iterations of truth and taxation for decades. I went back and looked through our files yesterday. So yes.
Okay. Well, it changed in 2012 because I remember legislation and there was a lot of wailing and gnashing of teeth over that law. It didn't, it was a more of a hurdle. It didn't really stop any type of local options to do, to change spending to whatever they wanted to do. It just simply provided transparency about what we're doing and it was really holding people accountable to be, you know, here's, there's, here's their vote that they did. They made a choice to do this and people could go see that. In the tax led legislation that was passed, there was a smoothing of the CPI. Can you please explain that again?
So they went and looked back at five years of CPI and averaged it so that instead of using just the most immediate last year's CPI, which as you know, I mean, even just looking at the pandemic, that was pretty crazy. It could have allowed up to 8% CPI in one year. It took an aggregate amount of those five years growth so that governments weren't artificially punished or rewarded for inflation.
Where did they get the new construction population data for the calculation?
The new construction portion?
Reuse, yeah, reuse of property and, and new constructional part of the calculation.
So that came from, there is a form that would be provided to each local government from the clerk's office, I assume, based on appraisal data. Each governing body would get that in June and we would see what those values were for each of the different characteristics here in, under both truth and taxation and tax lid. And it was the, the state provides certified budget workbooks that we must use. We're not just allowed to turn in our budget book. And so in that form, there's actually a computation that was done and we would plug in those figures. And then we would have to fly that to the state so they could see what the computed limit was.
How much will it take for us to go through that process to kind of understand what that number would be had we, if this law was still in place?
I did it. I've already done it for you for the 2025 budget under both the old property tax lid. We did that last year during the budget process. And then I've heard you reference doing it without the public safety exemption. And so we have both of those figures ready to talk about tomorrow.
That's awesome. Great. Appreciate that very much. Then finally, we have a report that shows how much tax abatement we have approved that's currently in place.
I don't know that we have one that we have approved, but yes, as a part of our annual audit, we have to produce information that shows abatements and exempted property.
Any that have TIFs, for example, we can, or whatever.
Any, any abatement at all, ADX, the TIF and IRB, any of that is listed. And so we'll have that as a part of the audit.
Is that available tomorrow as well?
I'll have last year's available. We haven't completed it yet for this year's audit.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Lindsay, thank you for this. This is really helpful. I'm excited about tomorrow. I think tomorrow's going to be great. Here's what I'm.
Excited. Woo.
Yeah, yeah. Cesar County Government, Cesar County, the county commission is going to continue to lead in the discussions on how you find great balance between service we provide and the cost of that service. We will continue to lead in this and 2026 budget won't be any different. So thank you. Okay, Tanya. And we do have, just so everybody knows, the chamber luncheon begins at 11:30. So.
I'm going to convince.
You are so good.
Okay. So I have three things to cover. First thing is, and these are all things that I discussed yesterday during legislative updates. First item there is testimony that Adrian Clark put together on House Bill 2331, which is the cremains bill. So this would be testimony that the commission would provide and we would get that to Jason and Jessica. The hearing is on Tuesday at 9:00 AM. Dr. Stedman would be providing written testimony as well. And then she will be actually testifying in person. So then, of course, you know, the commission, I think that would be great that you are providing written testimony as well. So what I'm asking here is if you would mind just looking that over, let me know if you're good with this, if you have any edits. And then you will get this put on letterhead and get to Jason and Jessica.
Give it a quick read. I'm good with this. I saw the advanced copy, so I'm good with this. Any objections to doing this? Is it? Yeah, is, yeah, paragraph three is incredibly helpful. Any objections to putting this on counting letterhead and sending this as a group? Okay, I think we're good.
Okay. Second item is, I mentioned this yesterday as well. We talked about the sales tax formula. This is on our legislative platform. We got a house bill number yesterday, so it's House Bill 2377. And I just provided that to you as a copy if you're interested in looking at. There is a hearing Tuesday at 3:30 and I know that Lindsay and Tom Henry are working on that. I wanted to ask if that is something that you would like to provide written testimony on, and I can get that to Jason and Jessica.
To be clear, this is changing the formula, correct? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't.
I, I, I think this is something we've been talking about for a few years here. I do think this would be relevant. Commissioner Howe, do you agree? Relevant to supply supporting testimony is what our thought is on this?
This is the one that, excuse me, yeah. This is basically we're getting, we get penalized for lowering our
Our mill levy.
Mill levy. We get penalized on the distribution of the sales tax. And I think that should be the, the easiest thing for any, any state legislator to understand. As they're talking about property tax and everything else.
Yeah. Well, it looks like Nick Holheisel, Representative Holheisel is introducing this. So okay, it's good conversation there that we can have with him as a member of the South Central delegation. So.
Is that something that one of us needs to testify at?
Probably be really good if we could have somebody in person or on Zoom to testify.
When is this?
It is Tuesday, February 30.
Commissioner Howe, would you be willing to do that?
So what we'll do is, I know that Tom and Lindsay are putting together the written testimony. If you don't mind, when that's done, I'll just send that to you and you give me a thumbs up on that and we'll get that to Jason and Jessica. Okay. And then the last item, I talked about this yesterday, and this is the, the fast track permits. I talked to, let me back up a little bit. Yesterday, that was amended by the House. What they did was they took out multifamily residential, commercial and industrial. However, it still applies to single family residential. It, it doesn't concern Chris Labrum on the permit side, but it does still concern Scott Wadel because of the broad definition of application. So he believes that this fast track permitting applies to zoning cases and subdivision planning. So I just want to make you aware, we've provided those concerns to Jason and Jessica, and I'm kind of waiting to hear what the next step is on that. Scott has also reached out to the city lobbyists as well. So we've kind of got city and county lobbyists and kind of waiting to tell us what the next steps are, but we do have some concerns with that bill. So I just wanted to bring it to you.
Keep us posted. That's good. Thank you. That's helpful. Big deal.
That's all I have unless I feel like I'm permanent ghost, but if Justin Wagner has anything that he wants to bring up as far as large say.
Jasper, anything to say?
Hi, Chairman, I, I didn't have anything to add on anything Tanya said, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? Keep us posted on that one. Yeah, that'd be good. No, this is good. Thank you. Tom?
That's all we have.
That's it. We got a luncheon to go to, don't we? Okay. All right, everybody. See you tomorrow. 8:00 AM. Where are we at, Lindsay?
It is not 8:00 AM. It is 8:30 AM.
Forgive me.
I didn't get, I will not be there at 8:00. You can be there at 8:00 if you'd like, but it starts.
Our calendar says eight, so it is 8:30.
It starts at 8:30.
I'm sorry, 8:30 tomorrow in cat budget retreat. Boy, it's going to be great.
Hell, about fourish.
Hell, about fourish. Okay. Thank everyone. See you tomorrow.